Welcome to our first Town Hall for Staff and Managers of 2016. My name is Andrew Savagian, I'm with the Office of Communication, I'll be moderating today's session. Today's topic is an update on the alignment. After our presentations, we'll have a Q and A session. And again, for those folks in the field, if you have a question, bottom right of your screen is the little icon to click on and type it in and send it. Our panel for presenting today includes Deputy Secretary Kurt Thiede, Assistant Deputy Secretary Ed Eberle, and External Services Division Administrator Mark Aquino. You'll notice Kathy Stepp is not here today unfortunately. Kathy's under the weather and has a pretty bad case of laryngitis. But apparently she is tuning in, so you guys are on watch. So with that, we'll kick it off to Kurt, subbing for Kathy.
Thanks, Drew. And as usual, we do have some seats up front here, folks want to filter to the front of the room. Come on up, Meg. Well, thank you. And for supervisors that were at yesterday's session, I can assure you that Kathy's voice is even worse today than it was yesterday, so we're wishing her the best. Well, good morning and thank you for participating in today's Town Hall. And to begin with, I think it's really important, right on the outset, to start about, talking about what today's Town Hall is not. Today's Town Hall is not about final organizational alignment decisions. Today, we are focusing our attention on the priorities identified through the core work This is the beginning, and we'll be getting a slide to kind of show you where we're at in the process of the next phase in this process, where we'll be soliciting feedback on the concepts and initiatives before making any final decisions. The focus of the preliminary results that we will be previewing for you today are issues that the department leadership team believes are of greatest interest for external customers and stakeholders. Now, that said, there are also a series of issues that go beyond the scope of what we'll be talking about today in the presentation, but we'll certainly be touching on those later, and they're more programmatic or operational in nature. In total, division management teams, integrated design teams have developed over 100 recommendations for efficiencies, and we'll be going into some of those in high-level detail today. Now, you've seen this slide previously, and what this is, is a snapshot of our reality. It's not just a reality for Wisconsin, however, but for countless other natural resources agencies around the United States. Over the past 20 years, the department has been subject to FTE cuts, and for years, we've been asked to do more with less, to cover duties for vacant positions. If I had an opportunity to put workload on that same graph, it'd be a red line probably pointing up to the opposite direction. The question DLT asked last year was, were we willing to continue, to see the slide continue, or were we going to be proactive and do something about this? So we chose to do what all successful organizations frequently need to do, which is to evaluate their priorities and their structure. Again, I mentioned Wisconsin's not alone. We reached out to 11 other state environmental and conservation agencies, and we learned that like Wisconsin, other states are focused on, that other states are focused on, and many of the themes that we're going to be talking about today are consistent with what we've identified. If you're interested in that information, we did share that information on our website. This effort is about optimizing and looking at maximizing the value of the limited resources to ensure that we're successful in implementing all parts of our mission in order to provide better environmental outcomes. The alignment effort is not about a workforce reduction. It's about prioritizing our core work and aligning our resources with the work to better serve our customers. And really, there's no better time than now. We are defining the priorities rather than having priorities established or decisions made for our agency. And in the end, we will have more compelling data to identify future needs and qualify the consequences of potential budget cuts. This will be critically important going into the next budget. I think it's also important to note that the entire effort is being guided by our mission. It's more important than ever that we deliver on all aspects and elements of our mission. As we look to see how our work relates back to mission, we need to couple the realities of the staffing and our resources that we discussed earlier on our highest priority work, so that we can maximize our ability to accomplish our agency's mission. In addition to the mission, there were nine goals that guided this process, and we outlined these for you this past summer, that guided this process from the beginning and will continue to guide us as we move forward with the next step in the alignment. In addition to the DNR's mission, vision, and values, the One DNR approach are reflected in the alignment processes and the final organizational structure. I want to focus just on the One DNR approach for a moment, and the pride that I guess I've seen throughout this entire effort is department leadership teams, management teams, have broken out of the silos and taken a look at efficiencies, not only across department programs, but also across state government. Increasing alignment between agency services and customer groups. Improve workload management by documenting, prioritizing, and efficiently managing our core work. Increasing efficiency by grouping similar functions within divisions, such as fish and wildlife, certain wear functions, and certain water functions. Increasing financial flexibility and sharing of resources. Improving consistency by building systems and processes to maintain, for main business functions. And then increasing integration, collaboration, increasing accountability through line reporting, and maximizing outcomes that we can produce. This slide should also be familiar. We're about halfway through this alignment effort, but hard work still remains, and that work will be outlined shortly by Mark Aquino. As I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation this morning, this is the beginning of the feedback phase on the concepts and initiatives that have come out of the work of the division teams. And today, we'll be providing you with a preliminary summary of what's been accomplished thus far, and provide you a sense of what lies ahead in the coming months. By the end of June, as indicated here, we will have finalized alignment decisions. We will have a roadmap in place to guide our implementation, and some things we will do right away, and other things may take some time. As you can see, there's an arrow on the bottom box that kind of points out into the future, and that's where we start to operationalize a lot of the decisions that are going to be made. Some may require legislation, others may require budget changes. So let's focus on why we're here and what we're here to talk about today. In August of 2015, supervisors throughout the agency participated in facilitated MAW mapping exercises, which resulted in the development of what we refer to as MAW maps for every program in the agency. Until for the first time, the department has a full accounting of all of its core functions, supporting processes, and key outputs and outcomes. And this is no small task, I can assure you, and I can also assure you that no other state agency has a better accounting of the work that takes place within their agency. Then in September of 2015, the department leadership team convened integrated design teams, or what you may have heard referred to as IDTs, for each division, which were comprised of supervisors, division staff, and staff outside the division to ask critical questions and challenge some of the assumptions of the teams. The primary charge of the IDTs was to develop recommendations for efficiency, and the level of investment needed to accomplish the priority work by identifying what was required by state and federal law, and what was critical to successfully accomplish all aspects of our mission. In developing the recommendations, the IDTs relied heavily on the programmatic MAW maps and the feedback from staff and from program management teams. As you recall, staff were invited to share ideas at Town Halls. DLT hosted alignment outreach sessions that were held around the state, a formal department-wide survey where hundreds of comments were collected, and listening sessions hosted by IDTs, and by sharing their ideas with their supervisors or their management teams. The SWIM port was incorporated into the IDT process. For those that offered feedback, I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you, and that your input made a difference, and many of the DLT's recommendations came directly from that staff input. The recommendations that were developed by IDTs were vetted through their respective division management and program directors, which presented their recommendations ultimately to DLT for consideration in December. Just going over briefly, the areas that we're going to be talking about, and then Mark's going to be going into more detail here in a moment, are the documented, the departments, are to document the department's core functions, analyze work effort associated with those core functions, prioritize the department's core functions, identify opportunities for efficiency, and develop recommendations on the level of investment needed to accomplish that priority work. And here are the outcomes, the core work analysis results. Leverage staff expertise to accomplish the core work. Focus on the DNR's niche. Strategic investments in information technology. Improve service delivery. Enhance integration. Streamline permitting and streamlining policy development. Now, you'd think that with an agency as diverse as we are, that trying to fit all of those 100-some recommendations into these categories would be difficult, but these are the outcomes, and these are what we were able to identify as far as what those core agency priorities were going to be. Now, these priorities will also enhance our ability to implement the laws we're charged with, and also stay true to the mission. There will also be some trade-offs, however, associated with these priorities. We anticipate savings through various efficiency recommendations, but we also recognize reallocations will be necessary, away from lower priority work to work determined to be the highest priority. Now, you may see yourself or your colleagues in some of the detailed recommendations that will follow, and while the work you do may change, we remain committed to minimizing staff impacts and implementing our DNR mission. Now, I'd like to have Mark Aquino walk through in some more detail on some of the recommendations that fit into each of these categories. Mark?
Thanks, Kurt. I'll be going through seven slides, and getting in just a little bit more detail, and then there will be a couple of slides on next steps, and then how we can continue the discussion and get your feedback. So in the first theme, the leverage staff expertise to accomplish core work, really the unifying factor on all of these bullet points are, are there some opportunities where we can do some consolidation of similar-type functions that are happening in different places in the agency, consolidate them in one place, and gain some efficiencies through specialization? So just briefly, to create a cohesive approach to non-game and rare species management. Non-game and rare species management take place right now in a few different programs across the agency. We'd like to take a look to see whether it might make sense to consolidate those into one place in the agency, possibly natural heritage conservation. Improve our ability to manage those non-game and rare species management, and then free up time for other folks to do more, focus on game species management. Similar concept on create specialization of property management and habitat management. Those of you who, excuse me, manage public lands, DNR-managed lands, probably do some habitat management and then property management, like signing, fencing, parking lots in your everyday PD and your work. This is about looking at whether we can kind of separate those duties, have some folks who are biologists really focus on the habitat manipulation, and other folks really focus on some of that conservation infrastructure. Again, really looking for some efficiencies. Consolidate complaint response and use as a model for functional efficiencies in other program areas. The Waste Program has an initiative where they have basically an individual who is the focal point for complaints, the public notices there's an issue with a landfill, so on and so forth, and they've allowed that person, that person basically takes those complaints and deals with them from the time they come in the agency till they're resolved, rather than having a bunch of other staff work on those issues. And is that a model that we might want to look at adopting for some other programs? Last one on this themed slide is freeing up technical time, or the staff, the time that technical staff spends maintaining their facilities, paying bills, things of that nature. And so these are things that we have to do at administrative facilities, field offices, that are just normal administrative operations, normal building maintenance. And is there an opportunity to build on the previous investment we made on facility operations managers, to have some staff take care of those types of building management needs across the agency? Again, freeing up the time of the park managers and the other folks to do work that's more along their line of expertise. This next slide is just looking at opportunities for us to really kind of focus on what our niche is. As we went through the process that Kurt described, there were a lot of questions that the various teams answered, and we really didn't find a whole lot of work that, you know, we're doing that was completely sort of out in left field, but we did find a number of items that, yes, are part of our mission, but we think that it's worthwhile to look into and say, are we the best entity suited to actually complete this work? It's important work, but are we the best entity to do it? So the very first one is looking into opportunities to maybe consolidate recreational vehicle and trailer registration processing. Right now, our customer outreach and service program renews and registers a whole host of those recreational vehicles, everything from ATVs to boats, but we have a sister state agency, the Department of Transportation, who has a large infrastructure on that. They have 72 offices, we have 28. Are there some opportunities for efficiencies there, also resulting in improvements in customer service, more opportunities for them to more conveniently get their business done? Consolidate operator certification and licensing functions. We're primarily an agency of permitting, regulating, but we do have a few different locations and different programs where we're doing licensures or certifications. And this bullet point is really thinking about, are we best suited to do that work, or should our sister agency, Department of Safety and Professional Services, really a primary function is that type of certification? Would there be some efficiencies of looking at maybe having them do that work? There's another part of that discussion, if they're doing some regulatory work, should that work come our way as well? Transfer management of properties that are not in alignment with DNR's mission. And there's not a lot of properties that probably fit this criteria, but one example would be the Portage Levy. It's a property that this agency became responsible for managing in the 1960s, and the statutory change at that time, and if you look at it now, it really doesn't advance our mission. So are there opportunities to find other ways to get that property managed? Are there properties that are similar, which would free up some of our scarce property management resources to sort of what we really think are important work? Last one on this slide is evaluate printed communications and involvement in promotional events. Very important work, but again, the question is, what should our level of investment be, and how should we go about doing that work? If you look at promotional events, we have everything from Farm Progress Days to local events to State Fair. So the question being, what should our level of investment be, and if we're a player in that game, who should be participating? Who should be our representative? And then on printed communications, we have everything from sort of a warehouse full of different publications at Darwin, to other printed materials like the magazine. What are, should, what should our role be in those types of printed materials? And for our publications, are we still communicating to people in the way that they like to get their information? Strategic investments in IT. This was nearly unanimous, we looked at what came out of every different integration design team, and real strong theme coming from the staff surveys as well. So everything on here is, in general, looking at opportunities to automate business processes that are currently manual, whether they're internal, or they're how we interact with our customer, or in some cases where we have systems, you know, enhancing those, expanding them, and improving them. So the first bullet point is really kind of just a little bit of an example, digitizing records. It's a lot easier for us to keep track of what we have and make sure the right folks have access to those records quickly, conveniently, if they're digitized. A lot of our online interaction with our customers, we feel like there could be some benefits of developing more opportunities for them to apply or provide the information they need to provide to us for a whole host of business reasons. If we had some online fillable form systems, and we expand those beyond the ones that we have now. And along with that, particularly when we're in permitting, it's a huge benefit, and we hear this from our external customers as well, is expanding the abilities we have to take payment and signature electronically. The Business Portal is something you've probably heard about before. We first started saying, let's take a look at this, and let's look at some permits associated with agriculture and construction development. What we found is through the surveys and through the integration design teams, maybe we should expand the scope of that effort to other parts of the agency. And again, really briefly, the notion here is it's a portal where the customer doesn't have to know anything about our organizational structure, or even what permits they might need. They just have to know what they want to do, and then through a series of questions, it kind of leads them to, here's what the permits we think we need, and if we're successful in this whole screen, they can go on and do their application and receive their permit electronically. Online system for grants administration. Now, this is talking about grants that we administer and we award to others. This isn't about grants that we receive from federal agencies or others. But it's really just to tie back to a different way of doing business with our customers. They would like to be able to provide that information, those applications to us online, and we could increase our efficiency in moving data around if we had that automated system. Second to last one, investing in the right tools for the job. So technology has progressed, we still have a number of folks in programs, whether they're in parks or in permitting programs, that are taking a clipboard and going out and making their inspection, and then have to do that transcription at some point. So can we gain some efficiencies by providing them with tablets, and then can we also get the right type of equipment and reduce the number of devices that we have to pay data fees and connection charges on, so that's affordable? The last one on this slide is the mapping and database enhancements. We have a lot of programs that rely on a lot of base data. For example, for a lot of programs, it makes a big difference if a piece of property has a federal interest in it, but we don't really have a good system. The programs can easily access that, and it includes all the data. So can we gain some efficiencies by creating some of those types of layers, or enhancing existing databases or building databases now where we just keep records manually? Improve service delivery. A lot of ideas came forward in this particular area. The first one is exploring alternatives for efficient and effective state parks program service delivery. You probably know that in the last budget, the revenue model for the parks program changed, where essentially, the program needs to be completely self-sufficient financially. So this is a series of ideas, looking at some potential opportunities to enhance revenue by looking at things of expanding campsites and other opportunities, as well as looking at maybe obtaining some additional flexibilities, and taking the resources that we do have in the parks program, and aligning them at the properties that the public has voted for, essentially, be making them the highest visited properties. And then how can we work back and make sure that we've got an acceptable level of service at the other properties as well? Prioritization of land management services. This kind of goes back to that habitat management and infrastructure, conservation infrastructure management. We manage 1.6 million acres of land, how can we bring all the programs together who do that land management, and set clear ecological objectives for all of those properties, and then have that kind of drive our investment, the staff time and dollars, to try to achieve those objectives? Recreational property law enforcement service delivery. Very similar. We have a number of programs where we have credentialed officers. One example here would be, how can we take a look at our parks credential folks and our conservation wardens, and do we have the right mix right now in terms of what law enforcement activity those two types of credentialed staff currently conduct on state parks? Are there some opportunities for more integration and coordination there? Changes to manage forest tax law and private forest lands assistance. Right now, about 30% of the forested land in Wisconsin are in the tax law programs. And so this is an idea of taking a look at whether we have some flexibility, and taking some of the resources that we're using to administer that, those tax law acres, and maybe bring them to bear a little bit more on the 70% of the acreage that's not enrolled in those programs. Point of customer contact service delivery improvements. So we have done a lot of work trying to make sure that our customers who want to buy licenses have multiple different ways that they can buy those licenses. We have bigger service centers, satellite service centers, we have online, we can answer questions at the call center. And this is a concept where we would evaluate our current distribution of full-time employees, and seeing how can we align them in the parts of our operation where we sell the most licenses or we answer the most questions, and how can we do that in a manner that also doesn't walk away from some of those satellite service centers, because we do want to maintain a presence there. So it's really more of kind of an allocation wherever our full-time, where our LTEs. Watershed program emphasis on front-end outreach and compliance outcomes. We talked to our folks in the programs in this particular bureau, and they made it very clear, hey, we get better results if we can get out from behind our desk, and we can talk to the customers on the front end, understand what they want to do, be able to have the conversation of how they might end up modifying their project to get a good application and a good outcome. And then we'd like to have more time on the back end, doing some compliance checking, making sure that the permits that we write are being complied with. So that's the initiative, it kind of started on some ideas in watershed program, but I think it would be fair to say that this is a concept that other programs probably will be exploring as well. Enhance integration. We've talked a lot about integration, we talk about One DNR. You know, integration helps us get to the right answer in a comprehensive fashion, and also can help us get there sooner, more efficiently, and provide better customer service. So the couple of ideas here, sand mining and Federal Energy Regulatory Commission work, both big-picture issues that involve a whole lot of programs throughout the agency. And we have some coordinative efforts in place now, but this would build on those, basically probably name another coordinator, and then look at how can we build teams around them, so that we can make sure that we're always taking an integrated approach on those complex issues across the agency. Inspection coordination, something that we've heard internally, and we've also heard from our external customers. You know, businesses and others will say, hey, we have three or four or five permits with DNR, is there any way that maybe you could coordinate the field inspections that need to take place, so we can dedicate one day to having inspectors on-site, rather than maybe four or five different ways? So this concept is looking at, to what extent can we cross-train our staff? And maybe in some cases, a staff person can cover a couple of programs, and then when we've made those efficiencies, are there opportunities to, as much as possible, try to coordinate those visits, so there's one day as opposed to two or three days, from the customer perspective? Prescribed burning coordination. Again, a number of programs do prescribe burning, and is there an opportunity to have a prescribed burning coordinator or a team to make sure that we're looking across those program boundaries, and we're making sure that from an ecological perspective, every year, the properties, portions of those properties that really need to be the prescribed burn as much, at the highest level, are done as much as we can? Combined contaminated soil, contaminated sediment cleanups. Right now, this is, these two activities are done in a couple of different programs, so are there opportunities to consolidate and build on their expertise, and possibly put them in one location? Or do we need systems to make sure that they're always being done in an integrated fashion? Law enforcement coordination. We talked about maybe some different roles of the different types of credentialed officers, particularly on DNR-managed land. This concept has more to do with the administrative parts of the function, so can we build on the efforts that have already been made to coordinate our hiring, our training, equipment purchase, things of that nature? Streamlining permitting. So there are some ideas that have to do with the structure and approach to the permits themselves, as well as kind of some process stuff. So for the permit development improvements, the first one's explore opportunities for more general permits. We already have quite a few general permits in some programs, but this is about taking a look at those other areas where we're in individual permits, and are there other opportunities where a general permit would be an appropriate measure across our programs? Second one is alternative approaches to development of permits. There's kind of a theme, as you'll see on this slide, as we kind of go through the individual points. Are there opportunities to leverage our workforce by having permit applicants take more of an active role or more responsibility for certain parts of that application process? And this one, thinking would be perhaps looking at the air program as a pilot. Are there opportunities where certain qualified permit applicants would actually draft their own permit, then we would review and prove? And this is a practice that some other states have taken, and something that we would want to take a look at. And then is that approach going to be applicable to any other programs outside of that pilot? Incorporation by reference in permits. This is in reference to, a lot of our permits are really enforcing federal law, federal rules, and right now, we do a lot of writing to kind of translate that. Is there a way we can just save that time and incorporate those federal regs by reference? Permitting efficiencies. Increase MOUs and partnerships. This is really looking at principally local units of government, and potentially some type of industry sectors or business, where we can sit down, we can draft an MOU and say, so long as you do your business in this manner, we're okay with you proceeding without individual permits. Is there a way to leverage that partnership? Also could expand into grants, there may be some grants where counties would be best suited to actually do the administration, and we have some funding we can provide to them, so can they take some of that work off our plate? Expand assurance programs for contractors and consultants. This is definitely in that theme of, can some of the professionals who are part of our regulatory process, can, if they meet certain qualifications, experience levels, and requirements, can we rely more on their work and look over their shoulder less? So can we build on the efforts where we already have that in place? So can we build on the efforts where we already have that in place in a number of programs across the agency? And I would be remiss to say, if I didn't also mention that this is a trust, but it's also let's verify that. So what kind of accountabilities can we make sure we build into our assurances and we expand this approach? Single point of contact model for municipal government projects. A lot of times when we're dealing with municipal governments, it might be a public road and then there might be some associated private development. Rather than having a number of people from a number of programs go out and have their interactions with those municipal governments, are there some ways that we can just kind of have a single point of contact and then that single point of contact works through the other programs? And making it'll simplify things certainly for the municipal government and we think there's some efficiencies internally if we take that approach as well. Streamline policy development. So the rulemaking process improvements, in the last couple of years, I think there were 33 different proposed rule scoping documents that were submitted to the Natural Resources Board. And so we have put a lot of time and energy into those. We want to continue to do a good job, but are there some procedural changes or maybe some specialization changes that will allow us to do that good work but reduce the amount of time that we have been investing in those scoping documents? Incorporation by reference for rules. This is sort of that same concept when we talked about permits, about just referring to the federal rule in a permit. This actually would go to the drafting and development of our own rules. So rather than rewriting and Wisconsinizing those federal regs, can we just do that by reference? Interestingly enough, this may require a rule, but it would probably be worth the investment of time to go through, given what we think the return would be. Streamlining economic analysis. That has been a bigger and bigger part of the work we do, with rulemaking, it's other work we do, WIPA documents. So are there some opportunities to provide some guidance to programs to make sure that we're doing the right scope? In other cases, if there has been a economic analysis done at the federal level, can we just rely on that? What types of opportunities do we have to reduce the amount of work that we need to do for economic analysis but still do a good job and meet our legal requirements? And last but not least, our flexibilities within the safe drinking water loan program and clean water fund. Kind of the higher level take-home here is we think that perhaps with some minor state statutory tweaks and some agreement with EPA, we may be able to increase the flexibility of the funding that we get to make sure that we're investing those funds in the positions and the activities that really move the needle the most in making sure that we have clean Couple of slides on next steps. As Kurt said, this is the beginning of the next phase. And so we're starting the outreach with our staff. Over the next couple of months, we're going to have a lot of sessions. From here on, we're really going to be asking our program directors, our bureau directors to be reaching out to their staff. And I think, we get to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about that process. But this is a beginning and we're going to need your feedback and your ideas and your participation on teams that will be formed on a number of these topics. We're also going to be starting to reach out to our external stakeholders. In the weeks to come, we will be primarily be using the forums that the secretary's office has had in place for four or five years, the secretary's office roundtables. Tend to be with groups of types of customers, forestry, local units of government, business, fish and wildlife, and putting some of these ideas, the ones that apply to them, in front of them and getting their feedback. We'll also be looking at any customer stakeholder groups that we've missed and look for opportunities either to get them to the table at these roundtables or if we need to set up an opportunity to speak with them, we'll do that because we want to make sure we hit all the bases. As Kurt said, these ideas that we just breeze through kind of at a high level tend to be the ones where there's a lot of kind of external feedback that we're going to want, kind of the bigger picture issues. But we want to make sure you understand that there's going to be more information on the other ideas coming forward, kind of in phases as we move ahead. So under developing and refining recommendations, I believe next week's resource, you're going to get additional information on another set of projects that are really almost exclusively cross-division. We also have some projects that our brand-new project lead participants are going to be working on. There's five projects that they're working on. There'll be a summary of those projects in next week's resource. And we'll be providing you with some information on how we're going to proceed with some program-specific recommendations. I was reminded that in next week's resource, there also will be some print and summaries of kind of what we're going over today in a little bit more detail, a little bit more breakout. So there'll be a little bit more meat on the bones you'll see in next week's resource on these concepts. As Kurt said, you know, we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of concepts that we need to ground truth, get feedback on, adjust, say we're going to move ahead, we're not going to move ahead. But the goal is to make sure that we have the decisions about what we're going to do, what our final alignment's going to be, what that roadmap is by June 30 of 2016. And we know that the implementation, a lot of these ideas will extend beyond that. So circling back to how you can provide your input as we proceed through this phase that we're just starting today. Think we've been pretty consistent from the beginning since last July. We really want you to have conversations with your supervisor, ask questions, provide your feedback, make sure that those supervisors are getting that information to their program management team, division leadership teams, and beyond. As we, as I mentioned before, within the next week, every program will be having some type of kind of structured outreach. It may be by section, it may be by a whole program, but you should see invitations coming forward from each of your programs. And that will be really a good opportunity for you to really kind of dig into the details about, well, what does the bullet point on slide four, what does that, how does that involve us, what's our thinking, what teams might we form? You do have other options, though. You can go directly to anybody on your program management team if you have questions or ideas. And you can go to anybody on your division leadership team if you have questions or ideas. We want your input. And we hope that as you learn more about these different concepts and you see a particular team that you have an interest in that you want to be a part of, make sure that your program directors, your bureau directors know about that as we go about and start assembling these teams. So I think at this point, that pretty much gives you a whirlwind tour of the concepts with just a little bit of detail and hopefully sets the stage so you know where you're going to get more detailed discussion and how you can start to provide feedback and ask your questions. So I'm going to turn this back over to Kurt to bring it home.
So I think it's one of the things that's important to note here and you're kind of wondering, it's, okay, so these are some high-level suggestions or ideas, but kind of what are those next steps are. These ideas that have been outlined for you are those that we, the Department of Leadership Team feels that have merit, that we should continue to look at further. And now this next phase is going to kind of flesh out to determine, okay, is this worth moving forward with? And then if we're going to implement something like that, what might be some of the costs or where maybe we have to give in order to accomplish that? So more work needs to be done. However, over the past five years, hopefully you've seen that there's been things in what this slide is trying to show folks is strategic initiative is one piece of what we've been trying to implement over the past five years. As you know, we rolled out our vision and our values in 2013. And over the last several years, the agency has made some strategic investments to improve the way that we deliver our products and services to better serve the needs of our staff, customers, and the taxpayers of Wisconsin. Some of these examples include investing in supervisors and leaderships, like the all-supervisors meetings that we just held, project lead, which was a revisioning of the DNR's Leadership Academy, improving communications through the connection, the resource, which remain important ways to getting information about the alignment and many other things taking place at the DNR. The Ask DLT process, these town halls. We've been improving customer service and satisfaction through survey solicitation on emails and developing performance measures that we can report out to the public on how we're doing. Effective and efficient product and service delivery like our lean project initiatives and other process improvements and again, the one DNR approach. And then engagement, the Dennison Culture Survey, training investments. This alignment efforts has leveraged all of those experiences and lessons that we've learned along the way to continue to move the agency forward. And finally, this is the last slide that I have today, what's not changing? This is not changing. Our mission, visions, and values have guided us throughout this process and they will continue to guide us as we move forward. Our values are reflected in the recommendations that we've laid out today and they will, as an, and they will help us as an agency move forward in our vision to excel while keeping focused on the mission and why we exist. As Mark and I have shared this morning, significant work remains and opportunities for input, and your opportunities for input into our future remain. And our deadline of July 2016 is right around the corner. Following today, we will begin to engage our external customers and as we've indicated. And after today, our teams will begin to ramp up their work. But it is always important on a long, complex projects to pause and say thanks to those who have helped us get to this point. We couldn't have accomplished as much as we have without the contributions from all of you. And specifically, our division and program management team have committed thousands of hours and meetings. They have been, they have been and will continue to remain engaged throughout this process. The integrated design teams or the IDTs, approximately 70 colleagues contributed to this effort. We'll be acknowledging their efforts specifically in an upcoming resource article in the time that they've committed to helping us out as well. Project lead participants, 25 future and aspiring leaders will be contributing as well as we move forward. And then the cross-divisional teams that Mark referenced, they'll be picking up where the IDTs left off. I'd also like to offer a special thanks to Jeffrey Volz and Tim Cook who are standing in the back here today for their work on the, really operating the gears and the process of materials associated with guiding us through this effort. It's been truly exceptional. Thank you, gentlemen. I'd also like to offer a special note of thanks by saying kudos to the strategic alignment planning team who helped Tim and Jeffrey through their efforts, Bart Sponseller, Paul DeLong, Kristin Tomaszewski, Mark Kino, and Pat Stevens. And finally, and most importantly, each of you for your continued engagement and interest in the future of our agency. As Kathy would say if she were here today, is it's not about Kathy, myself, or Ed. This is about the future of the agency, the future of your agency. The changes that we're looking to make, the efficiencies that we're looking to gain will be here long after we are. And what we're really doing is here is trying to figure out a way that we can, along with your input, position this agency to be successful moving into the future. With that, we are going to end the official talking at you portion and look for taking questions. One thing that we were just trying to do today is, as Mark alluded to, is there's going to be opportunities over the next week to delve into more detail with programs, bureaus, perhaps even division-level conversations where you're going to take a little bit of a deeper dive into some of these areas. So what we're hoping to do today is rather than dig into each of these specific subject areas, is if there's more questions as it pertains to general themes, process, that we can try to answer today. If we don't get to all the questions, we'll obviously be posting them as we traditionally do, along with the answers. But with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Drew to take us to your questions.
Thanks, Kurt, Mark. While we're ramping up on the questions coming in from the field, do we have any here in the Jeff, To and Madison right now?
Do you want to explain that other states website a little bit?
Anything from you guys?
We do all start, first one, a question looking for a little more information about other states and their realignment efforts.
Yeah, I don't know, we can probably post the link in some of the follow-up FAQs. But yeah, what that was, was basically our opportunity to take a look at, just based on our conversations that whether Kathy has had at Ecos or that I've had at the Association of Fish and Wildlife Agencies, we bump into sharing conversations and experiences with other states. And it was surprising to see just how many other states are dealing with similar issues. So we started to do a little bit of a deeper dive into their processes and also what they've come up with recommendations. We shared that information at a recent Natural Resources Board meeting and that report is available and we'll make sure we get that link out so people can take a look at that.
Just keep going. Oh, wait, sorry.
Got one right here.
Just a process comment. So as you, as you move into the next stage with the feedback, so, you know, I would encourage you, us to look at ways to get feedback from stakeholders that are more scientifically designed rather than just, you know, talking to individuals or leaders. Just for example, you know, one of the things that we've done over the years is we've done scientifically designed, you know, mail surveys of hunting customers using, you know, Bob and Jordan's expertise. And if I looked at the emails I got from ways, people that said, I want to interact this way, they would be saying, we want more IT-based interaction. But when we do a survey of the entire population of that, that hunting public, that stakeholder group, 60% of them say the most frequently used is the paper production, the printed material, and only 20-some percent are using our website. So sometimes, you know, the different ways we get stakeholder feedback gives us very different results.
The, I guess what I've just offered there is we are hoping that with the information that we're be able to provide at those stakeholder roundtables with talking to some of those leaders, is going to be able to provide feedback on are we headed in the right direction? And here's what we're thinking about, is this what you're hearing from your members as well? You're also going to have those types of conversations. And I think feeding that back in with your conversations that as we're getting into meeting season for a large portion of our agency and those types of dialogues and sharing and getting feedback is going to be critically important. We also have to be realistic about our timeline. We are going to hold to the having answers by the end of this fiscal year and that's critically important because we start talking about budgets this summer already. So we'll certainly look to try to get feedback as diverse as possible, but I think a lot of it is going to be coming through dialogue. But thank you, Ken.
Other questions in Madison?
Looking, could explain a little bit more about what we're referencing or talking about in regards to decreasing focus on promotional events?
Mark?
Again, if we went back to that slide, we have historically, I think, as an agency, every program, every geographic area has a number of events, whether they're local club events, the bigger ones, the Farm Progress Days, State Fair. And I think it's really more just looking at how much return do we get in the staff time invested in all those events? You know, are we the only entity that can be there sending the message? Can we work more with partners? And just recognizing that every time we send staff to one of those events, there's an opportunity cost of them not doing something else. And just making sure that we're on the right side of that kind of cost-benefit ratio.
I think if I could just build on that a little bit too, in addition to what Mark indicated, is that are we being as efficiently, as efficient as possible with rolling out those messages? And do we want to focus on some core messaging? One of the areas we're really focusing on right now is this Go Wild portal and how we sell licenses and issue permits and provide opportunities to the public. Do we want to try to highlight some of those areas versus trying to do everything? And that's the reality here. There is going to be trade-offs as far as if we prioritize certain things, there's going to have to be certain things that we, we give up, but we still want to be effective. So let's be strategic in those decisions. And those are the type of conversations that are going to be taking place in that group.
You know, along the way with this whole alignment thing, you know, I've constantly been seeing, well, takeaway, takeaway. Where are we doing in our part even as, with the employees and the staff that are working so hard? Where's the input, input, input coming in? You know what I mean? You know, constantly taking away. When do we turn the corner and start seeing input in our staff and the morale? Because, you know, morale hasn't been really good here. And people have been really struggling to just still be happy with their jobs and feel like they're excited about what they're doing. You know, where does this start turning the corner?
I'll try to offer an answer to some of that. One of the things I think that we have been hearing in regards to leading to some of the morale issues, and this isn't all of it, but it's the workload. It's the workload and the lack of staff to do the job. One of the things hopefully that you have been seeing is that by us engaging in this alignment effort, we've been able to say, we've got a plan. And as a result, we've been able to get many CPRs approved and recruitments going forward to try to help bring more staff on, to help with the workload. And then in addition, this is the very issue of, I don't want to have to turn to staff again and say, I'm sorry, you just need to do more. What we're trying to do is leverage the realities that we have limits on what you can accomplish. And what we're trying to do is say, okay, there's going to be some things we are going to take off the plate. We're going to allow you to focus here. And again, And again, that's not the whole story as it pertains to our morale, but that's a couple of the things that we're trying to do in this process, so that we don't come out of this as we have in previous years where we've, and I've experienced this myself, we take a budget cut, we nibble around the edges, and nothing changes for you. And, and that's something that we're, that, I can't stress that enough as part of this effort. We can't nibble around the edges. We have to be, make strategic decisions about what we're going to continue to do, where we're going to focus, and be brave enough to say, we're going to have to give certain things up. That's not the total answer, I know, but that's at least a couple of the things that we're trying to do to try to address some of that.
Thank you. Question in the back.
On the slide for the staff input, it talked about alignment teams, and I'm wondering, are those alignment teams set up? And if they are, who are, who is on those alignment teams that we could provide input to?
I think that.
So Anthony, that question on the alignment teams? I think, and when you see the resource article on Tuesday, you'll see those cross-division teams, and some of them have to do with not only process and sort of what should we focus on, but also alignment questions. So I think by the end of the day, next Tuesday, you'll have a far better idea of kind of what other teams are out there and what they're working on. Now, of all the items that we just went through, there are not standing teams that have been formed for all of them. So some of that work will be ahead of us, and I think as we're trying to communicate here, to this, to this point in the process, there have been some smaller groups of folks who have been working on it. It's been on department leadership team, program management teams, division leadership teams, integration design teams. But we're at the point now where there's going to be much broader participation. You know, we're going, various staff with interest and expertise will be on, teams will be forming to look at these.
And I think in addition to being on teams, there's probably going to be some taps on the shoulder as well for certain expertise, you know, whether it's a specific program. You know, grants was mentioned earlier, there's going to be some outreach there to make sure that we're utilizing the expertise within those programs and making wise decisions.
Thank you. Any question in the back?
Good morning, just, I guess, a question or a little more comment on the external outreach piece. I think as Kent mentioned, a lot of us have relationships with industry groups and stakeholders that may not be part of the roundtable arrangements. And so if you can give us more, it doesn't have to be today, but if you can give us some more direction on what information should we be sharing with them and how do we collect their feedback, or is there a place on a website, for example, that they can go to provide their feedback, or do we bring that back through some channels? Just a little more structure around that, I think, would be helpful.
Sure, thank you. And also on the roundtables, so we've had kind of a suite of roundtables and kind of some, I don't know, set attendees that we've typically been having conversations with. One of the things we're also doing right now is identifying where we may have some gaps. So that's also, I think, you may be asked the question back as well as, as we start identifying where we may have some gaps where we're not getting all the feedback that we want. So that's, there'll be kind of a two-way street there, I think.
Question from the field?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, July 2016 deadline was mentioned. What is that deadline defined by and what will be accomplished by then?
So maybe let Mark answer the second part of this, but the, just in regards to the deadline, we started this and we, we basically made commitments to ourselves and to a number of decision-makers that, you know, have been watching the agency very closely, saying that, give us a year. Give us a year to determine what we are going to do, what we are going to look like, and how we're going to be aligned. And we started with some initial changes back in July, and now we are going to be looking to finish up. So it's, this is the type of thing where if we said that we needed two or three years, I don't think that we'd be given the deference to kind of be controlling our own direction here right now. So that deadline imposed by us is something that we think is achievable. I think so far, we've been able to keep on task, and I think we're only a couple of weeks behind right now where we thought we would be. But now this is a very important phase as we, as we come into, come into a landing. The other reason that that's really important, and I alluded to it earlier, is the fact that budget deliberations start this, this summer. We want to make sure that we're well poised and we've got a game plan and a roadmap moving forward as we have those discussions and as we identify any potential legislation or rules that may be needed to help us fully realize all the changes.
A couple more, just one kind of technical, that questions will be posted, where will they be posted?
Normally through the ASDLT process, you can do them through the resource, if that's okay for you guys.
Yeah, that works.
Sure. So implementing the realignment may require legislative action or budget modification. Which organizational changes are being considered or may require approval of the legislature and why?
I don't know if we have the answers for those yet. I think at a high level, as we started laying some of these out, we've identified that there are, we are starting to delve into, if there's a statute says you shall do this this way, if we think we can find efficiencies, we may need to seek a legislative change there. If it's some of the alignment changes when it comes to structure, working with DOA to make sure that both from a funding perspective and alignment perspective, those are established and documented in statutes. So those would be some examples, but I think it's still too early to tell based on the high level that we're operating right now. And it's really going to come down to the final recommendations that are coming out about, we need this specific change to accomplish X or Y. That's where I think we're going to get down to the details on statutes.
Yeah, and if I could just add to Kurt's answer, that's kind of a little bit of a wonky process technical issue, but the types of alignment changes that we'd be talking about, we, we can by and large make those changes administratively along with some consultation with Department of Administration, because we're not talking about in those types of changes, increasing expenditure authority or increasing positions. But in a subsequent budget, we would want to go back in and make sure that those kind of technical corrections would be made as part of the budget process.
Anything from the GO9 folks? Okay.
As we talk about workload, it makes sense to look at vacancies. How many vacancies are there in the agency today?
Shelley, do we know that rate at this moment?
No.
Okay. We'll, we'll work on getting that answer. I know we're making good progress, very good progress, on chipping away at a very high, well, I shouldn't say very high. It was a higher vacancy rate as we were during the budget time, and we've been making good progress on recruitments, filling positions. Hopefully, we've been feeling some of that, and we can, we can get that answer posted as far as when we, where we're at with vacancy levels right now within programs or across the agency.
Got a question in the back here, hang on a sec. I'll make my way through.
I have a question that kind of relates to the law that Governor Walker signed last Friday, I believe, on the civil service, and how you are taking that, those changes of that law, which is supposed to go into effect in July, and your alignment work is done in July. You mentioned LE recruitment and hiring. What happens when all that is taken over by the DOA, from what I understand, is written into the new law that just got signed? Thank you.
So the HR being managed out of DOA?
That's what she's asking. You don't have answers to that.
Yeah. I'm sorry, we don't, who asked the question back there? Ann?
Yeah.
I don't think we have quite answers to that yet. I know right now our HR is still looking over the legislation, and one thing I can tell you, though, is that dialogue has started between DOA, DPM, and agencies to make sure that we collectively know the next steps moving forward. So I think there's more to come on those discussions, and we'll be utilizing the resource, I'm sure, as, as changes do come forward to make sure that's communicated.
So the line will align with the law? Yes, DNR.
We will follow the law. Okay.
Thank you. Other questions down here? Okay. Field?
How far along is the coordination with DOT and DSPS on potentially taking over the registration and licensing duties that DNR currently handles?
Answer to that is, I've had conversations with my colleagues at those agencies, just to let them know that we'd like to have that conversation. And again, to stress that we don't have the answer on what that looks like. What this does is it provides us with the opportunity to engage what they're doing. Example that I would use is that there's a lot that can be learned from other agencies and how they're approaching issues. DOT has come a long ways on the use of mobile technology and tablets. We had an excellent briefing by them probably about a month ago. There again, what can we learn from each other, and not assuming that we have all the answers. So they may come forward with a solution that says, well, have you thought about looking at it this way? Maybe it's kiosks or some other technology. So conversations at least have been had that we're going to, we would like to engage in that dialogue, but final recommendations have not come forward yet.
Questions down here? Okay. Any in the field?
The question is, and what we're trying to do is just try to stay out of the weeds somewhat in some of these answers and answer more the high level. There's a question here of, if the legislature and the governor will mandate each agency to plan for a 5% budget cut, how do we expect to fund IT improvements? Legislation will, will come, budgets will come. I think what we're looking to do is utilize what we're learning through this core work analysis to be able to help individuals make informed decisions and that we can lay out business cases. This is critically important. When we go across the street, I think there's an assumption that we know full, they know full well what we do intimately, and when changes are recommended, that's not always necessarily the case. And so how do we lay out for individuals that are looking to make business case decisions to kind of take our work and translate it into that? I think that's one of the benefits of the MALL maps, and in the end of this process, I think as Mark has indicated, we've discussed before, is that each of our programs within the agency is going to be able to say, okay, moving forward, here's our map for moving forward about what we do and how many resources we allocate to those things. That's starting to develop the business case for what we do. And I think that's going to be a strong tool, not only for us who are managing the agency, but then also for decision-makers that are making work, that are going to be making policy decisions. I think we're going to be poised very well and probably better than any other agency that, whether there's a 5% cut or not, to be able to say, all right, if that cost takes place, here's what it's going to have to give. Because again, going back to the question earlier, it's not okay to say, well, we'll give a little bit here, but we'll still be able to keep up this level of service. I think we'll have that map documented so that we can have those informed decisions and discussions moving forward.
Thank you. Others down here? Couple more maybe from the field?
Will this alignment process evaluate the core work being done by LTEs? Yes?
Yeah, there, there's no distinction between whether FTEs and LTEs are doing the work. It's really what, what is the work and is it core?
Right. Yep.
Next one, kind, kind of has to do with pay. It's stated morale was low, how do we turn that corner? Do you think employees would work more efficiently, effectively, if they are compensated compared to the private sector?
Some things we don't control, yeah. I think what we're looking to do is try to tweak and manipulate those things that we can, that we do have the ability to as an agency, and other decisions are going to continue to be made outside of our, out of, outside of our purview.
Okay. Just trying to get some of the questions out of the queue. There is a question.
Last question from down stairs?
Okay.
When soliciting input from external stakeholders, would those comments recommendations be available for all staff to see?
Yeah, I guess, I think the feedback that we're getting from external stakeholders hopefully will be realized within the final recommendations, but I don't, we haven't discussed yet, I guess, the, one more thing to put on our plate, Jeffrey and Tim, as far as how we want to catalog and document those comments. They love when we fill up their plate.
Yeah, it looks like we're done down here, so however you guys want.
Okay.
Those are the field questions.
Um, yeah, let's just keep rolling through.
Do we have LTE numbers for 1995 versus 2015? Wasn't that an earlier slide?
Yeah. Could we get that?
Do we have the, is there those same numbers?
So the question was, do we have numbers of LTEs from 1995 to 2015, similar to the chart that shows the FTE decline? I'm sure we can probably come up with that, but I don't know if it's readily available right now.
We, I think we go to 97.
97?
I think when we started doing HRS, I think it was in 97.
Okay.
Then the parts back we could possibly go.
Yeah, I think we can provide that, provide that information.
What are MALL maps and how did they help in this process?
Why did I have a feeling you were going to look at me when that question came up? MALL maps is a term that we, as early on said, we were never going to use again, but somehow we just stuck. So briefly, what, what they are, and we hired a facilitator, a consultant, who met with every one of the divisions and all the supervisors in that division. And basically what it is, it's an attempt to really try to capture all of the, the main reasons for your program being in existence on a one-page document. So if you would kind of imagine a grid and across the rows on the column, the top row, it's, what are the major functions? Are you selling licenses? Are you regulating wetlands and waterways? What are those main reasons for being? And then as you go down that column, what activities do you have to successfully complete in order to be successful in meeting that core function? So we had our programs take a look at that, a lot of feedback. They came back and said, hey, this is why we exist, and here are the main functions, and here's what we got to be successful in. Then we looked at the programs and management and budget, and they said, okay, how many FTE and LTE do you have doing the work in this column versus that column versus the other, until we had a full accounting? And then the last thing we asked that's on the MALL map are, what are the major outcomes? So why do you do this work? What are the measurables? How can we measure to see if we're successful? And it's, it's all that captured on one page, which really forces people to look at the big picture and say, well, why, why do we exist? But getting back to Kurt's point, it's a great tool, as we say, how are all the resources aligned in a particular program? And having those conversations of saying, hey, you know what, maybe we should move some more to this? Or if you're talking to a legislate, legislator, they say, we want to, what would you do with five less people? You could easily point to that to say, well, what, what trade-offs are you willing to make?
Okay. What is the CPR process as it stands today?
So the CPR process, and it's an acronym that I, I use.
Centralized Position.
Centralized Position.
Review.
Review. CPR process, thank you. So how that process works currently is, the recommendation comes up through the programs to the division, and then there's the division approval of going forward for consideration. After division approval, those are collected each week, and the division administrators, along with myself, Budget Shop, HR, get together to have a conversation about the, the package of CPR requests that have come through. Right now, a lot of that discussion has been taking place in regard to, one of the reasons we're getting everyone together is just to make sure we're assuring that consistency across the different divisions on the level of positions that are being requested to be filled. And we're also asking the question right now is that, looking forward, knowing we don't have all the answers, is it realistic to believe that those positions moving forward aren't going to change or be shifted in the, in the new structure? Again, don't have all the answers, but we're trying to take some educated guesses. Once I sign off on those, those then go to the HR program, and once we've assured with the budget that we've got the budgets to fill, then they go into recruitment. And I know, I think, probably is one of the future town hall topics, too, we'll be talking about our new HR structure and process moving forward. So that's the CPR process.
Okay. So we have one last question from the field?
Sure, one or two. Will transferring work to other agencies require statutory changes?
And feats of strength, no. So some may. It, it just depends on, on how that statutory authority is, is identified. If it says the DNR shall, that may have to be changed. Any updates on Mary?
Anybody down here still? We got one over here, hang on.
Yep.
I have maybe not so much a question, because I don't know if you have an answer, but more of a comment, and it kind of gets to the whole idea about, the idea of staff morale and the question about compensation. And one of the things that I keep thinking about as we've been doing this whole thing is really...
is really, you know, it's all about, it's all about the people here. And all of this goes so deeply and people are, have questions and concerns and, so the communication is very important. But I'm also thinking about, how do we, so how do we, as we go forward with this realignment effort, how do we continue to work on supporting the staff? And what really motivates people? You know, there is some evidence that if you pay people well enough so that they're satisfied, you don't have to worry about that anymore. And I know that's one of the issues that's less in your hands, but there are other things. There's a lot of other reasons why people show up every day. And I think especially at this agency, there are a lot of other reasons that people show up every day. And so I would just encourage you to think about what those motivations are and how you can really, I think that's, that's a key way to get people to engage, even as you go through change. If you can really tap into the things that are inspiring to individuals, and it is an individual thing, you know, you have to, you have to talk to your neighbors and look them in the eye and have those conversations to understand them. And I think it's so important. And I think that there's such great people here. If we can really, really do a good job of that, I think that will go a long way as we go forward. If anyone's interested, I think I mentioned this to Kurt at our staff advisory team meeting, there's a great book called Drive by Daniel Pink, and it gets at that idea of what motivates people. So that's my little speech for the day.
And I, and Tara, thank you. And I was able to secure that on CD, so for my commute, I can, I now have an opportunity to review that. So thank you for that recommendation. And you're absolutely right. And it's hopefully some of the changes that are, that came out as a result of the Dennison survey, employee engagement, wanting more communication, wanting accountability by supervisors, having the opportunity to provide supervisors feedback, the various communication tools that we've, a lot of those are somewhat systems and aren't quite getting at the, the level below. But hopefully you also see our commitment to try to develop tools and resources based on the feedback that we get, but understanding that at certain levels, sometimes it's systems that are, that are provided to try to at least address some of that. But I think one of the poignant comments that you made, it's about the people. And please know, this effort is largely about the people. It's about what we heard, about what Kathy heard when she went around the state the first time, and it's the, we're drowning here. We need to fill positions and you, you need to take some things off of our plate. So please know that the employees at the Department of Natural Resources, the passion that they have for the job, the love that I have for the agency, that's what's fueling us. And I think that I am encouraged, the fact that we have the ability to drive this process and that we have the ability to dictate our future. So please know our commitment and continued commitment to communicate and also to our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Another one?
I just, I just like, would like to share an experience I've had in applying for jobs here. I applied for a job in September and I haven't heard anything back from them. And I've sent emails, I've even connected verbally with one of the people that interviewed me, and I don't understand why there's such a lack of communication with that. And you just don't hear. And I am also experienced with a previous position that I applied for. So I'm just kind of, kind of disconcerned about why there's such a lack of communication when people apply for jobs and how it takes so long if they do hear back on what's going on.
Yeah, and it concerns me, too, to hear that. I don't know if Jennifer's here? Giebert?
Yes.
Maybe if you can just follow, Jennifer Giebert, introduce yourself, maybe afterwards. Jennifer is our new deputy in the HR program. And Jennifer and Amber are committed, I know, for working on reforms. They shared some of those HR structural reforms with supervisors over the past two supervisor meetings. So that's why I suggested that might be a good topic for a future town hall, just to have everybody hear what's going on. But please follow up with Jennifer and share your experience to see if, because that's, it's not right not hearing.
I really appreciate it, because I love this job. I love the people here, which is really wonderful. It's the best job I've ever had. It's what I've prayed for for many years. I want to keep having that type of commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ed, I think you get the, for the last question.
Okay. Any updates on merit pay to staff?
Yes. And has that article gone out in the resource yet, or is it?
It's going out next week.
Going out next week. So preview, the resource article next week will be communicating. What I'm communicating now is that our DIRA DMC requests from FY, help me out.
14.
14 were approved by DPM, formerly OZER. And the letters have gone out to employees that are receiving a DIRA or DMC based on FY 14. Supervisors are provided with the opportunity to present those letters to their employees. And I think those awards will be realized on which check, Shelley?
March 4th.
March 4th.
Fourth, whatever date it is.
Third or fourth. So that's an update. And it's also our understanding that we're going to have the ability to look at then subsequent fiscal years, and those will be the conversations now that we've kind of caught up with FY 14.
Great. Well, thanks, everyone in the field. Thank you for the panelists, and thank you here in Madison for your time. And this will be recorded, this is recorded, so you can watch it on the website, and then we'll have the rest of the questions through the resource.
Great. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.